Ready?
All right. I'm going to call the March 9, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Lowry, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
If you please stand and place your hand over the heart and face the flag and repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, one second, I'm gonna do a roll call. Hey, hey.
Four forms, sorry about that.
Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Commissioner Harris, who is excused.
All right, thank you. Before we start, I want to welcome, we have two new Planning Commissioners. Congratulations to you both. Brady Barto and John Langford to the Planning Commission. Take maybe a quick moment to see if you guys real quick would want to make a little brief statement introduction about yourself, and then we'll move on to the next item. Commissioner Barto?
I'm Brady Barto. Honored to be appointed to the Board and looking forward to working on it. I'm a resident here in the city and have been for all my life.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Langford?
All right. Thank you, Chair. My name is John Langford, lifelong Newport Beach resident, and was really looking forward to this opportunity to give back to the community I love so much. Just wanted to thank my wife in the audience here, Laura Langford, also Newport Beach born and raised. I want to thank my parents and in-laws watching on TV, watching our kids from home for all their support. Who else should we, probably City Council for their trust in myself and in Mr. Barto, and staff appreciate all their help getting on boarded, and thank you to the public for showing up and participating. Just makes this process stronger and looking forward to spending more time here. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, this is the public comment section. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Yep, come on up, state your name. Hi.
Oh, hi. Oh, hi, I'm super excited to meet you. So I'm actually a UCI student. I'm in the Masters of Urban and Regional Planning Department. And so one of our assignments was to make a public comment. So I bike a lot, so I bike from UCI into Newport Beach. And something I have noticed is that a lot of the times, like, there's a lot of parking issues around there, sometimes with like parking spots or just lack of like bike lanes. So maybe just a comment would be if there could be more like marked lanes or even like bike parking, maybe that could like take place at some of the spots. But yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you. What's your name?
My name's Emma McCarthy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, staff requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, there's no requests for continuances.
Okay, moving on. Consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of February 23, 2023. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Call for a vote.
The motion carries for zero with Commissioners Barto and Langford abstaining.
Great, thank you. Item, we'll move on. Item number two, this is the Mason Encroachment. Site location 410 Tustin Avenue. Staff, do you have any comments or?
Mr. Chair, I'll just go ahead and present the item. This is a minor encroachment agreement for some existing improvements in the public right-of-way requested by the property owner. It's a consent item. It's fairly routine. You've got pictures in your staff report. Public Works does recommend the waiver of council policy under the condition that we approve and execute an encroachment agreement with the property owner to maintain those improvements. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Nope, okay. Seeing none. Commissioners, any ex parte communications? I'll start with Commissioner Barto down at the end.
No.
None?
None.
None?
None?
None.
Okay, seeing none, moving on. This is a public hearing, it's not a public hearing, but if anybody from the audience would like to speak on this, this would be your time to come on up. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chair Elmore and members of the Commission, including the new members, my name is Jim Mosher. I have no objection at all to this item, but I did want to mention although the City Council in its wisdom has given you the authority to approve encroachments like this, the staff report refers to the area of land in question as the Tustin Avenue Parkway. And if one looks at our city charter, which the City Council is supposed to follow, you will find in the city charter that there is a section establishing a planning commission, and there is another section establishing something called a Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. And the word "Parkways" appears in our city charter. And the body that is expected under the city charter to advise the City Council on all matters pertaining to parkways is not this one, but it is the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. That is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
I am the property owner, and I don't understand what he just said regarding the Parkway and that we're trying to improve the property. And the residents on either side of our house and down the block all encroach. And I would appreciate that we would be allowed to maintain what is there and further enhance, because we are remodeling the house to make it better and remodel and do new landscaping and improve the street appearance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that hearing. Staff, any additional comments in your end?
None.
Okay. I'll bring this back to the Commission for discussion and/or a motion and/or a second.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Rosine, okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner Barto?
I'll second.
Okay, great, we'll go ahead and call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on, these are the public hearing items. Items number three, Mother's Market. Site location 2510 and 2530 West Coast Highway. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Let's thank you, Chair Elmore, and good evening to the Planning Commission. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division. This is the Mother's Market project at 2510 and 2530 West Coast Highway for a traffic study and coastal development permit. So this is the site. It's located on West Coast Highway, and you can see Avon Street in the rear. The subject property is in Mariners Mile. And it has been, the existing use right now is a marine sales use on site. This site has a approved mixed-use development, which was approved by the Planning Commission in February of 2021, and it was later upheld by the City Council in July of 2021. The final approved mixed-use development included 36 dwelling units, a 5,096-square-foot office, and a 65-space covered parking lot. The picture on the bottom, you can see the yellow arrow indicates the location of the office component of the mixed-use development. The project request tonight is to convert the office use into a grocery store retail sales use. This requires a traffic study as the conversion to the grocery store generates over 300 average daily trips. And a traffic study is required by the city's traffic phasing ordinance. Also, a coastal development permit is required due to the related intensification of use within the coastal zone. So this is the proposed project, just a comparison of the approved and proposed for the commercial component. The only thing that changes is the commercial use from office to grocery store. Everything else remains the same, including the square footage and the parking. Here's a site plan. Just want to note that there are no physical changes with this project. It's the conversion of use. As you can see, the grocery store would front West Coast Highway as the commercial component of this mixed-use development. So the traffic study was conducted, again, because it increased trips above 300 new average daily trips. The proposed project creates 690 new trips compared to the approved development, which is 292 trips. The study was prepared by LSA, and it studied 12 primary intersections, which are nearby the subject property. The study concludes that the grocery store conversion would not create significant impacts to the analyzed intersections, and that no improvements are required. The project was, and the study was reviewed and approved by the city's traffic engineer. So in a summary of findings, the project is a conversion of use for previously approved commercial space. It is a relatively small grocery store intended to serve the local neighborhood. The traffic study concludes that there's no impact to the level of service in the studied intersections. And finally, there's no impact to coastal resources, views, or access, as is consistent with LCP. And there's no physical changes to the actual approved development. There is a change to Condition 20 that staff would like to recommend. I'll just read that change. Condition 20 states that "box trucks, trailers, and/or other large delivery vehicles of similar size shall not access the property from West Coast Highway and shall access the property from Avon Street. In addition, no delivery vehicles of any size shall park or load on any public right-of-way." So it's just a clarification to include any public right-of-way other than just West Coast Highway. With that being said, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and to approve the Mother's Market traffic study and CDP. My name is David Lee, and I'm available for questions. We have a representative from LSA here as well, and the applicant team is here, Sean Matzler, and there is a representative from Mother's Market as well for questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? I'll start down here. Commissioner Rosine?
David, could you remind us where the right-of-way ends on Avon? As you can recall, there was a, that, it feels like a driveway, but it's really not. There's a public right-of-way, and then it ends, and then there's a driveway after that.
Yes, Vice Chair Rosine, this is the image there. As you can see, it outlets from Tustin Avenue on the left of the property, and then it goes into a parking lot on Avon. So the street does go behind the subject property and into a parking lot.
So it does extend all the way to that last parking lot, for lack of a better term?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? No. I have a quick question. Did you say it was Condition number 20?
Yes.
I'm looking at Condition number 20 in my book, and it appears to be different. Can you bring up the verbiage real quick of what it was there? Which I have on handwritten page 100.
I'm on page handwritten 60 of the staff report.
Oh, okay. I'm on the wrong section. Okay, I'm going to take. Yep. Understood. Okay, cool. Commissioners, any ex parte communications? I'll start down with Commissioner Barto.
No.
None.
None.
None for me?
None.
I just emailed with Representative the applicant.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will go ahead and open the public comment. Does the applicant wish to say a few words or make a presentation?
Chair Elmore, Commissioners, Sean Matzler with Cox Castle Nicholson on behalf of the applicant. Congratulations, Commissioners Langford and Barto. First, I want to thank staff for their hard work on this project. This was a, could be a little tricky one, so I want to thank David and Jim for all the hard work on this. I just want to clarify a couple of things. No formal presentation. Mother's Market is a prospective tenant, but not a confirmed tenant yet. They're very nice. Deborah Rubino from Mother's Market was very nice to come here tonight. She can answer operational questions. The intended tenant is a small format grocer. Could be Mother's Market, could be Irvine Ranch Market, something like that. The applicant owns a center in Coronet Del Mar that has Mother's Market as a tenant. The applicant also owns Irvine Ranch Market Center off Irvine Avenue, so he's familiar with the use and the operators there, likes them. Also wanted to just clarify, especially for the newer Commissioners, that really the genesis of this application, this request, is to comply with a settlement condition. Two years ago, we were here, and we entitled this mixed-use project. And the mixed-use project included an office building in the front. This 5,000-foot space was office. Subsequently, the group called Protect Mariners Mile, the Coalition to Protect Mariners Mile, they brought a lawsuit against the city, included the development team. There was a settlement, I think it was included in your package. As part of that settlement, we agreed to come back to the city and to do what we're doing right now, which is to try to convert this use to a commercial use. The Coalition thought that this would be more appropriate, more visitor-serving. So that's really what we're doing here. We're trying to comply with this condition of the settlement by turning the office into something that's a little more neighborhood-serving. So in any event, happy to answer questions. Again, there is a representative from Mother's here, and the owners here as well. Here to answer questions, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Well, I have you there real quick. Do you agree with the recommended conditions?
We do.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Nope. Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner, classroom.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what's the square footage of the Mothers in Coronet Del Mar? And I'm wondering if this would just be like similarly sized to that store?
She didn't miss a beat. Forty-nine, forty-nine oh five.
Okay. And I saw off the top of my head, and I think there were 21 parking spaces that were available for the space.
Yeah, that's right.
Is that right?
We.
Is that a concern for the grocery store operator?
I mean, it's a mixed-use building, and so the way that the parking will work is that during the day when the tenants of the mixed-use building are going to the office, that parking is going to be available, so it's not assigned. So it would be available for patrons of Mother's Market.
So there could be some shared parking?
Exactly right, right. And in talking to Deborah, you know, their experience in Coronet Del Mar has been a lot of walk-up traffic. I expect that here, maybe not quite as much as CDM, but you would expect there'd be a good amount of walk-up traffic here from the heights.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rosine?
In regard to timing, how does that work in terms of what is the timing of the construction for this? Are you waiting for any subsequent applications? Or is this something that is going to be moving forward? Because there is a time limit on here in your conditions, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, there is, and we're, I mean, we've submitted for Plan Check.
That's correct. We're, at this point, there's a couple of conditions we're.
Yeah, but we're in the city for Plan Check.
Okay.
Great, any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. Okay, this time I'll open up to comments to the audience. Would anybody from the audience like to make a comment on this item? Mr. Mosher?
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. Certainly seems a good idea to have markets and amenities of that sort in association with added housing. Other areas of the city, it's not so obvious we're doing that. I have two comments. One is you are being asked to approve a coastal development permit. It has a number of findings that you're making. I just noticed one of them recognized that Pacific Coast Highway is a coastal view road. And the findings said, obviously, it didn't impact the coastal view, because this is on the inland side of the road. I just, which implies that coastal views are just views of water. And I wanted to suggest that coastal views are more than just views of water. And I believe our coastal plan, and I think our general plan as well, recognize that the bluffs along Mariners Mile are also a maritime feature. And so I think coastal view goes both ways. I don't think this particular change of use has any impact on the views, but I do think the views go both ways. Even though our staff tends to call those bluffs hillsides, they are recognized as coastal bluffs in our coastal land use plan, I believe. And then as to the Condition number 20, which your attention was called to about large livery trucks accessing the market from Avon, I couldn't find in the packet a clear picture of the new plan, but my recollection from when this was before you before was that the apartment complex is built over the passageway, so you have to go under. And I don't know, it would seem relevant, how much clearance there is for a large livery truck to go under the building, which I think they have to do to get from Avon to the front. And if that was the intention, or that they park on the Avon side and use, I don't know. And I could be misremembering, and maybe perhaps the clearance is tall enough for whatever they want, but that question came to my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Applicant, any final words or?
Nope.
Okay. Staff, any comments?
Yes, Chair Elmore. Appreciate the comment from Mr. Mosher about the coastal views, noted that. And for the clearance, I believe the clearance is approximately like 10 feet high, so you could fit certain, certain things can go under there. Certain vans can fit under there, but for the, you know, for the trucks or for the delivery, there is a loading space on the rear, on Avon. And, you know, if necessary for, you know, for more loading, it could be addressed at Plan Check as well. So they can park in the loading space, and you may have to, you know, bring certain things through the parking lot into the store. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Any thoughts, comments, or motions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Rosine?
I did have one more question, and I apologize. Where do the workers park associated with this? Is there an agreement that needs to be in place? The 21 spots account for those people that will be there, or how does that work?
Yes, Vice Chair Rosine, the workers will park on site, and the 21, the 21 spaces do account for customers and employees.
Okay, and, sorry. But there are two loading areas on here, which is interesting to me, but they're both depicted as fire trucks, or at least that's what they appear to be. The only way that they'd be able to do that would be off of Avon. They wouldn't be able to access, if I understood correctly, a ride-in, ride-out where off of Pacific Coast Highway where the other, it looks like queuing would take place? Is that the case? It's, and I'm looking at, I guess it's handwritten page seven. There's one of the documents that depicts the layout.
Commissioner Rosine, when you look at the site plan, there are two areas that look like fire trucks. That's really a depiction of where the fire truck would be there in an emergency. So that is not a loading zone. We wouldn't want the loading to occur in that location in the throw of the driveway. So in reality, how this is going to work is they're going to need to be bringing in smaller vans, and then, you know, parking inside the structure there, and then loading in, and then there's a small loading space in the back. You know, larger vehicles, we've prohibited from using the public right-of-way, and so that'll really force the tenant to use smaller vehicles that can access the site conveniently. You know, it is a little bit of a constraint on the site, because it is an approved mixed-use building, and the design is not remarkably changing. But as David said, you know, there are some changes that we can make at the Plan Check stage. This is substantial conformance, and that'll help alleviate some of those concerns.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you, appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions of staff, for staff? No? No? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I think this is a, I know when this came to us a couple of years ago, it was contentious, and, you know, went through a couple of different, I guess you could say avenues, but comes back here, and I think as, I think it was said, a couple of people, this will be a good, I think it'll be a great addition to the area and a good compromise, if you will, in terms of, you know, what this site will become, and it will be a nice use there. So I will recommend approval. And since I don't have my paper copies with me, give me a second. So it is, I recommend approval for PA 2022-101, Agenda Item Number Three.
Great. All right, we have a motion.
And if I may, is that with the modification?
Oh, yes. With the modification, yes.
And I believe we have a second for Commissioner Rosine. Real quick, I do also applaud the applicant for following through with her settlement agreement, coming forward with this item. And I think I can tell you, my wife would attest that she's very happy with the Mothers. So, okay.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, congratulations to the applicant. We'll move on to new business. Item number four, the 2022 Annual Plan Progress Report and Housing Element Report. The site location is citywide. This next item is a discussion item, not a public hearing item, and we will be asking for public comments. Staff, if you'd like to proceed with your presentation, please go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Planning Commission, Melinda Whelan, Planning Division. And this is an annual report required by the state. And it's required to report on progress of the general plan, including the housing element. And the report follows state guidelines from the Office of Planning and Research. And it's an overview of implementation of the programs in the general plan and the housing element, including more detailed data of the housing units produced over the year. And the report is due April 1st every year. So the last comprehensive update of the general plan was in 2006. And basically, it's a report on the ongoing tasks and long-term coordination. But the existing general plan is working and used daily. Some of the elements are due for refreshing. A comprehensive update has been initiated in 2019, and the update will follow the latest guidelines, including new topics such as environmental justice and climate change and sea level rise. And so this is just an overview of significant updates of the general plan for the 2022 calendar year. The housing element was certified by HCD in October. And also, there was an update to the circulation element with refreshed policies compliant with state law. And towards the end of the year, the City Council appointed a 30-member General Plan Advisory Committee. And so now, jumping to the housing element portion, so it reports on net new units to the state. And the building permits issued in the 2022 calendar year are important because they are accounted towards the regional housing needs for the housing element cycle. And for 2022, the total net units produced was 40. And there are several significant. And there are several significant projects with affordable units in the pipeline. One is 1300 Bristol Street, which is in plan check, and that will provide 193 total units, including 24 low-income, very low and low-income units. There's also Uptown Newport condos and Newport crossings, those are also in building permit plan check. They're anticipated to receive permits in 2023, and several other preliminary applications have been received for development in the airport area and West Newport Mesa. And then additional highlights of the housing element, many of the net new units have been produced by ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And an overview of the year shows an increase of ADUs, 59 ADUs submitted, 71 ADUs permitted and completed, and these can be counted towards our six RENA cycle for the housing element. Another highlight is efforts to assist the unhoused. The BE WELL was a new program that was implemented in 2022, and BE WELL works seven days a week to help people with mental illness and recovery, and getting them to housing and services. And a couple of things to note were that the new shelter, which Newport works with, the Costa Mesa Bridge Shelter, they permanently housed nine people that were suffering from homelessness, and also referred another nine to be placed in a transitional facility, which is funded by State Home Key Funds in Huntington Beach. And then another highlight with the housing element update and implementation is the overlay zoning to focus on areas identified for opportunity sites, and this will update the zoning to allow for housing on those sites. And the land use element update is anticipated at the end of 2023. And then finally, the affirmatively furthering fair housing. The city continues the contract with Fair Housing Foundation, and the city will participate in the OC Regional Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. Again, this is just a broad overview, and I'm available for questions and can answer questions on the housing data as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Yeah, Commissioner Klaasmer.
Thank you for that presentation. You actually answered a number of my questions with regards to future projects that would help satisfy the RENA numbers. Those were great slides. I'm curious, you said that there were a number of other projects that had submitted applications in the airport area. Can you be more specific about that, or is that something that we should wait to have come in front of us? Or maybe you can elaborate on the number of projects.
Sure, I'll tackle that one. You know, we're pretty active in the airport area right now. We have one, two, three applications that are pending, and then we have another that's sort of in a preliminary application stage, waiting to come in. We're also actively discussing some maybe future modifications to Uptown Newport, as well as the Newport Airport Village Plan Community, which was approved several years ago, up on the Saunders properties up on Birch. So I don't have a good total number on that, but it's probably, you know, zeroing in on 400 to 500 units all in. So, and those projects are, in essence, within the existing general plan allocation for the airport area. They are taking advantage of density bonus, and so in the end, you know, we're implementing the existing general plan as we're going forward, and many of those sites are also, you know, future housing opportunity sites in our sixth cycle housing element. So we're pretty busy up in the airport area.
It's great to see that the zoning that we put in place up there to help satisfy the housing element and RENA numbers that we need to meet are actually, that we're receiving applications to help provide that future housing.
It's definitely moving forward, there's definitely a demand, you know, and staff is, we're actively working on updating the land use element to make it consistent with the housing element. We're doing that right now. We're also drafting the overlay zones to implement, and those are the housing elements that are really part of the sixth cycle. The housing units that I kind of described here now are already entitled or are part of the existing general plan land use element. So in the next upcoming year, we'll be bringing to the commission the necessary amendments to the land use element, the noise element, new zoning overlays with objective design standards, all of that housing element implementation will be coming forward this year.
Great. Any other questions of staff from the commissioners? Commissioner Langford.
Thank you. Do you suspect that HCD or anyone else from the state will have comments to this report, or is this largely a receive-and-file from the state's perspective?
In previous years, it's a receive-and-file. Sometimes they have questions about the data, and it is available on their website, but we generally do not receive comments back from them.
Thank you. Commissioner Langford, I might also add, HCD has staffed up an enforcement division, and so with our housing element being newly certified, they have a group that's going to be watching the cities. And so these reports get submitted each year. They may have comments going forward that we haven't seen in the past, but they're looking for progress in all of the housing element programs. And so the report here does indicate, and while our housing element was certified very late in the year, we've already started implementing and doing those zoning changes. So I wanted that report to be in this, this report. But we have three years to get all that in. But as I said, you know, HCD is going to be watching, and if we fall short on the commitments of the housing element, I'm sure we will hear from them in the future.
Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Larry.
Actually, I just wanted to really just say a comment because it struck me today, not in my capacity as a planning commissioner, but as a help out USC on a few of their, on their less school development school, and we were at a meeting in downtown LA a little bit more than a month ago, and we had city managers there, you know, developers that all of us would know, state officials and everyone, and this was no focus at all in Orange County, but I just want to say Newport Beach came up a few times about how proactive they've been, and just a general surprise in the audience of, you know, how far Newport Beach has come and on this issue. And anyway, there were just a lot of good things said in the room, and one of those things you say, you don't, it's not what people say to your face behind, and, you know, it was, it was a real positive thing about Newport Beach, and just in light of various cities kind of fighting back on some of the mandates, and, you know, Newport's already kind of well underway. So anyway, it was just a lot of good comments about staff, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Commissioners, any ex parte communications? We'll start down with Commissioner.
None.
Nope.
None.
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 Okay, I'll go ahead now and open the public comment. Does anybody from the audience want to speak on this item? Please state your name and comments to three minutes or less.
I'm Virginia Anders Elmore, and I am here partly because recently of the ocean, we have a coastal erosion, and it has become more than obvious that the climate crisis is starting to hit us. And so I've been, I went to the Coastal Commission, that Coastal Coast Title Land Commission, but I happen to think that this group also should be part of that climate crisis plan. We have opportunities with the federal government and the state government with subsidies and things to push for solar panels, for putting in the electrical grids that are needed for all those electrical cars and the charging stations and all of that, and, you know, I just, I hadn't really looked through this, and I'm planning to go to the general plan meeting at the end of the month. But I think that in planning out what's happening with Newport Beach and saving our city, we need to also address trying to electrify our whole city and have people have solar panels and batteries, and so that we can really address this climate change, climate crisis, so that we can preserve our city. And I would ask that that would be included in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name one more time is Jim Mosher. Regarding the question about how much attention the state pays to the report, I would suspect that they pay very little attention to the written part of the report, but as mentioned in here, an essential part of the report that you're not seeing here is electronic spreadsheets that are being submitted, that have detailed tracking of how many housing applications have been submitted, how many have been approved and so forth, and since that's all electronic, I would suspect, or actually hope, that the state was sophisticated enough that they're automatically tracking what is happening through those spreadsheets. And as Mr. Campbell said, probably will get back to us if it's not doing what they expect it to be doing. And then as the question of the progress of our development and new applications that may have been received since this report was prepared for the benefit of the new commissioners and perhaps some of the current ones, I don't think it's mentioned here at all. There's supposed to be public outreach about our general plan and planning taking place. One good thing that the city does is on our city website, if you look under "How Do I", and you'll see off in one corner GIS mapping, and if you click on that, you'll find that the city posts a map called "What's Going On in My Neighborhood"? And if you look at those, you will see little stars for every planning application that is received, and if you click on those, you can find out what the PA number is. And if you're especially sophisticated, there is a way in the city's Laserfish Archive, the city has recently, for the last year or so, been allowing the public to see the application files as they come in, and you can find them under those PA numbers, although a little hard to tell you exactly where you find that. But to its credit, I think the city is trying to be transparent about its progress with development, so there's quite a lot of information there available, including the applications I think you can see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, I'll close that public hearing and bring it back to this commission for a vote or a motion? Or a discussion?
Would the motion be?
Or a discussion? It's a recommendation.
There aren't any comments, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Anybody else have a comment before our motion?
Just a quick comment commending staff. I've seen other cities going through this process, and the sophistication of Newport Beach is remarkable, and it's really good to see that, how thorough we've been, and looking forward to having this go through.
Call for a motion?
Call motion approval.
I'll second.
Call for a vote? All right, thank you. Moving on, item number five, motion for reconsideration. Any motions for reconsideration? Move on. Item number six, report by the Community Development Director, a request for matters which Planning Commission member would like to place on a future agenda item.
Chair Elmore, members of the Planning Commission, so we have, our next meeting is on March 23rd. We had scheduled two items for that meeting, although one of them has kind of fallen off. So at the next meeting, it'll be just the tennis club at Newport Beach, and that's the, kind of the revisions and changes to the pickleball establishment. So we'll hold that hearing on March 23rd, and that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Does anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item? Mr. Mosher?
Yes, Chair Elmore, one final time, my name is Jim Mosher, and I did have a question about this. At the last City Council meeting, February 28th, they held a study session on a coastal development permit that the city is requesting regarding protection of a bird called the western snowy plover. And at that study session, when the slide came to next steps, it implied, and I believe we heard verbally, that that would be not going to the Coastal Commission in the very near future, sometime later this fall. And so I'm surprised to see on the tentative schedule for April 12th through 14th, it says that the staff is expecting that to be heard by the Coastal Commission next month. So since that could generate some confusion among the public, I'm wondering which is correct. Is it sometime this fall, or is it next month that the Coastal Commission will be hearing that? Because there was quite a lot of public interest in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience wish to speak? Staff, any clarification on that?
Sure. When this was printed, yes, we were looking at April as the Coastal Commission meeting for the western snowy plover plan. We did get some feedback from the Coastal Commission, we might postpone it to May, but it's still, it's a work in progress. But it will definitely be to the Coastal Commission before the fall.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. Item number seven, request for excused absences. Any commissioners, or request for excused absences? Commissioner Bartel?
I need a request to excuse absence for the next meeting, the 23rd.
Okay. Any others? Nope, seeing none. We are adjourned at 7:18. Great work.